Welcome to the February 21st, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Municipality of the County of Kings. My name is Emily Lutz. I'm the Deputy Mayor here at the Municipality. We have a relatively light agenda ahead of us today, which is okay because of the list and amount of meetings we're going to have in March. So we may give ourselves a little break today ahead of the heavy workload we have in March. So, welcome all. We'll begin this meeting this morning by taking roll call. And if you're with us today, online or in person, you'll note we have one absence. Council Windsor is not with us today. He was attending, planning to attend virtually, however, has been unable to, so we will look for a motion at this point to excuse the absence of Council Windsor. Moved by Council Armstrong, seconded by Council Meisner. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion to excuse? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Council. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. It's in front of you. It's online. We've had some time to digest it. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Council Allen, seconded by Council Granger. Thanks, all. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in usual fashion. Once we have our agenda approved, you know, if it does get approved, which we'll see. Look for any counselors who may have a conflict of interest. So the motion is approved. Any conflicts of interest to declare with any of the approved agenda items in front of us this morning? Again, I see none, so moving on to item four, approval of the minutes. Our last committee of the whole was here in these chambers on January 17th, 2023. The minutes are in your package. Are there any errors or omissions for those minutes? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Council Armstrong, seconded by Council Killam. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. Council Allen, how did you intend to vote? In favor? Okay, we have motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Council. Was there any business arising from the minutes of January 17th, 2023? That anyone wishes to raise? No business arising? Okay, thank you very much. Item six this morning, we have a combination of folks with us this morning. The first presentation is from King's Transit Authority. And I'm looking who's presenting this morning. So Sunny McDougall is presenting. So I'll invite you up to the podium. Sorry, I have a list here in front of me. I'm trying to determine who's who for what presentation. I'll get your light on there this morning. Welcome to Committee of the Whole.
Thank you very much. So this is a joint. I'm kind of the changer of the slides or do you do that or do we do that? You do. So we have Dwight with us virtually, I believe, from, he's going to actually present the presentation, the actual numbers. I just want to caution you that and inform you that we have not yet brought this to the Board of KTA or Valley Waste. So this is up for approval in March at the Board. While we don't expect anything to change, we think it's important that you know that the Board has not yet approved the final budgets. So,
So also note, we do have Andrew Wort and Andrew Garrett here from Valley Waste in the audience with us this morning. And Dwight, why not? Is online, okay?
That's correct.
Just make sure we get everybody listed.
So I think the agenda had KTA first, but I think we sent the slide deck in with Valley Waste first up. So I think we're going to start with Valley Waste.
All good.
And Andrew Ward is going to walk through that presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present again. It's always a great pleasure to get out and speak with our partners. I'd just like to say a few words first. This budget was, has been presented to the Board, but they did not pass a motion to approve it, but there were no questions and I think it's quite a solid budget from a fiscal perspective, particularly given we're in a 5% plus inflation environment at this point. So how do I change a slide here? I'm sorry. Next slide, I guess. This is a little difficult to read. But most notably, there are increases in revenue of around the 5% to 6% in the transfer station operations. That's because we've increased the price for waste and mixed construction demolition waste from $125 a metric ton to $135 a metric ton. That's an 8% increase, but there has not been an increase in the last five-plus years. So we think it's reasonable to make that increase this year. In addition, I would note that this is probably the higher range of fees that are charged across the province. So I'm really reluctant to put it up again next year, but I think we should look at a policy and it's one of the policies that I'll take to the Board about, you know, regularly adjusting tip fees to both market rates and to inflation. So there's 1.49 million in conditional transfers, and that includes the assumption that we'll continue to work with Annapolis County and accept their waste in the Western Management Center. And that represents a million 15,000 in revenue, which is a significant contribution to offsetting overheads. So, you know, I think that we're in reasonable shape. I'll talk about some of the expenses in slides in the future. Perhaps the next one, please. So the net contribution increase that we're seeking from Kings County on a $4.8 million budget is $78,000 this year in comparison to last year. You know, a reasonable increase, and it's really related to revenue increases. Actually, on the previous slide, I also didn't mention that we are projecting that we will have a surplus this year. It's about a half million dollars, but these are always very difficult to project because the back half of the year is always the slowest from revenue perspective. And what happens in the landfill relationship we have, which is a cost-sharing relationship, often has significant implications to this. So next slide, please. So the key budget influences is the full integration of Annapolis County. We've been in discussions preliminary with Annapolis County. We've put a per-ton tip fee out to them, which is up about 5% from what it was last year. But they've asked us to return basically to the service level that we had four or five years ago, where we do full bylaw enforcement, litter cleanup, cart delivery, et cetera. And that really does not have a huge impact on us in terms of, we wouldn't have to add people. There would be additional fuel and maybe additional workload, particularly in bylaw enforcement and cart delivery. They would maintain their responsibility to provide carts. In other words, you know, any cart that we replaced, they would pay for. So I think, you know, overall, that carries probably over half a million dollars in fixed costs. And so I think it's beneficial to both Valley Waste members and Annapolis County that we look at doing this. From a major contract perspective, we contract a bulk of what we do, with the exception of the operation of the transfer stations. So the residential curbside collection is up by three and a half percent, which was a locked-in amount on a five-year contract. And obviously, you know, increase in dwelling counts has an impact on that. The recycling processing contract is a 10-year contract that's in its second half, last five years. And we have a pricing mechanism in there, which is the, you know, cost of living increase based on inflation. So their rate will be going up by inflation, which is 5% to 6%. There is a slight reduction in tonnage, which is, you know, I think we've seen exceptional growth in tonnage from the residential sector during COVID, and I think we're starting to see some of that back off. Similarly, with organics processing, we're currently renegotiating the contract. And, you know, in part, this is fuel, and in part, it's a cost of living increase that we anticipate being in around about 2.5%. Transportation to landfill, there's a slight reduction in the overall expense, mainly because we're thinking that there will be fewer tons next year going to landfill. That's primarily Scotia upgraded their facility, and we were expecting, they deliver around 2.5 thousand tons a year of residual materials, and we're expecting that to reduce, although frankly, we haven't seen that reduction yet. But I still think when they get their system running, it will be less. And there's no change in the landfill disposal rate. We're just assuming fewer tons, so there's a 2.8% reduction there. So the total major contract increases are $126,000 a year, not including fuel. Next slide, please. So I'm sure you will be talking more about fuel in the transit side of the operation. But in the major contracts, we're projecting that our fuel will be a $330,000. Wouldn't say increase because we're seeing that this year as well, but certainly over the baseline amounts, it's about 330,000. Internally, it's only around 26,000, 26.5 thousand. The primary reason for this is our fuel costs are reducing because we used to truck all of the recyclables and the organics from the Western Management Center to the Eastern Management Center through roll-offs. And the authority owns four roll-off trucks. This really started back when we did the cottage project, where we took all the bins out and we were using the roll-offs for running around and picking those up. And that was the first year I was here, almost, well, four years, almost five years ago now. And that allowed us to start whittling away and taking the work away from those roll-off trucks that are really quite inefficient from a fuel perspective and quite intensive from capital. Each one of those trucks is worth over 300,000, so it's 1.3 million total for the four trucks is capital. And we're now in a position, because we finally eliminated the last piece of that work or we will do over the next six months, to be able to sell those trucks off, get rid of them, get rid of the fuel bill. So it'll both reduce our capital intensity by 1.3 million and free up a whole whack of labor and reduce our fuel. Insurance in the waste industry is increasing significantly. We budgeted for a 20% increase in insurance. And this is primarily related to the incidence of fire in these facilities. These lithium batteries, we've had one instance in Amherst, well, Spring Hill, I guess. They lost their recycling and transfer station to a lithium fire, lithium battery fire. Basically, what happens is when they get into the trash, they get broken up, they ignite, starts the garbage off. And as a result, insurance costs in this industry are going up significantly. Employee compensation is basically neutral. You know, $5,000 reduction, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And the reuse center, we budgeted a salary to restart this facility, 42,000 plus benefits and a revenue of 40,000. This, it's interesting, we closed this facility when COVID hit for obvious reasons, but it's something that was a huge, we have hundreds of calls about this facility. And I actually also think that, you know, we focus mainly on household items and collectibles, but there's a whole segment of this, which is lumber, that we're gearing up. We have a forklift, we're building some containers to move the lumber and be able to sort it better. Like, I've been up there and seen half-sheets of 3/4-inch plywood go through. You know, so I think with a proper organization, this could actually become quite a significant revenue generator. You know, not millions of dollars, but certainly, you know, in the hundreds of thousands. So I really looking forward to kind of, and Andrew is as well, this is Andrew's department, but Andrew Garrett, sorry. It's Andrew to the power of two, right? Anyway, next slide, please. We did do a salary review. You know, increasingly, it's difficult to find, particularly in our labor pool, individuals who are willing to work, one, in the environment. Secondly, do intensive manual labor, but also have good equipment operating skills. And our workforce is aging. You know, we've seen a number of retirements of key members and recruiting those people. And, you know, for the next wave is key. And so we wanted to make sure that we were set up from a salary perspective, that we were competitive against similar industries like the feed mills, the pie plants. Less so Michelin, because Michelin is looking for, you know, perhaps a slightly, you know, different type of individual. But essentially, the recommendations were that we were in the ballpark with this, but that given inflation, that we would, you know, need to maintain that inflationary component to it. And that our benefits plan was as, you know, in the park with most of the other ones. So this year, you know, we put in the cost of living increase. We've reduced the complement of staff by two, and that is one operations, or two operations people, primarily around the drivers. And sort of one and 3/4 of a position in finance. We've included a 50% position of Director of Finance to be shared with KTA, King's Transit. Next slide, please. So there's three principal components to the capital budget this year. One is replacement of, you know, a little bit of operating equipment. The second is we have a safety issue around our compaction system. And we're still evaluating options, but the option that I think we probably will implement is to replace the compaction equipment with stationary compactors rather than top load. The challenge we have with doing that is we have a contract for hauling to landfill, which uses top-load trailers. And those top-load trailers would not be compatible with these compaction systems. So I've been negotiating with a contractor regroup or Dexter, and, you know, they gave me a ridiculous price to flip this over halfway through the contract. So one of the things that we can do is buy these trailers, the different style of trailer, use them for two years, and then when we go back out to marketplace for the next one, we'll include them in the bid and sell them off. So we would need four trailers to do this at 185,000. So we basically budget a short-term loan to allow us to buy those trailers. Now, if we get budget approval for this and we will then go back to Dexter and say, hey, look, you have the option of buying these trailers and, you know, giving us a reasonable fee for it, or we'll buy them and you can use them and maintain them, and give me some leverage to negotiate a better rate with them to actually purchase and things. Because they really don't want to, if I were in their position, I wouldn't want to have four trailers that are in the next bid that anybody with a tractor-trailer can, you know, put the money on the table, buy them and get into the business. So I think, you know, I think they'll be more amenable when we have a little bit of power. So we may not need that, but what we're suggesting is that we would borrow that money on a short-term, two-year basis and sell the assets back out at the end of the deal. Then there's compaction equipment and a refurb to the HHW and stewardship centers. These stewardship programs, which are household hazards, waste, used oil, electronics, light bulbs, refrigerants, these have become increasingly popular. And there is a new EPR program, which we think will come in this year for expanded electronics, and it's driving significant traffic to our facility. So I think being able to accommodate those safely is key. There's also a monitoring wells. We're anticipating with the new C and D, construction demolition waste regulations, that we will have to put monitoring wells in on both sites. Next one. So that's basically the rolling stock, safety and efficiency in the building and infrastructure. That's a project that we're working on that will look at, well, we're looking at what the Eastern Management Center, how it's laid out. There's two concerns. One is how do we equip ourselves for the next 20 years to improve diversion and maintain the levels of diversion we have? And secondly is we have a lot of small traffic, which is mixed with the commercial traffic. So we'll have sometimes, you know, somebody in a half-ton truck throwing off a few bags of garbage or, you know, a roofing project right next to the commercial roll-off trucks from EFR and Miller Waste and those types of things. And that is not wise from a safety perspective and a sorting perspective to do that. Next slide. So from, one of the things that actually, Kings County finance guys have been advocating that we do is set up equipment reserves. And we're in the process, we budgeted for that last year, and we've been working with MNP to try and put this in place. And essentially, by shifting things around, we can move to a full equipment reserve. The deletion of the, you know, 1.3 million dollars for capital requirement for the roll-off trucks makes this a much easier calculation or easier to fit into the budget constraints. And so we've budgeted for basically the same amount of capital we would do last year, but it would be split between infrastructure and the equipment. So there will be a policy going to the Board in March to establish that equipment reserve and fund that equipment reserve. And, you know, obviously, Kings County And, you know, obviously, Kings County staff would get a look at all the policies that support that. So I think that's the end of my section of the presentation at this point. I guess this are the questions. Have I confused you?
I don't, I don't think so. It was pretty clear. Any questions from council this morning, from Mr. Ward? Council Armstrong. Yeah, you just popped right on, so we may have.
They want to hear me speak.
Yeah, we're ready. Go ahead.
This isn't specifically to the budget, possibly future budgets, but I was wondering if you could give us an update on where EPR is, the legislation, possible dates? Because when EPR comes in, it will be a significant saving to our budgets.
Yes, so EPR is moving forward, maybe not at the speed that we would all like it to be moving. One of the things is that EPR, we always thought that EPR would require a specific act to go before the legislature and be approved. That's not the case. They already have the overall act that would allow EPR to be implemented. So it's really just the drafting of the regulations that need to be done, which is a much quicker process. I'm not quite sure, but we're anticipating that we'll see it this spring. Andrew, do you want to, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, so we have been told that it is with legal at the, at the province level.
Yeah, it'd be great to come to the mic so those listening at home can hear and watching at home.
Andrew Garrett is Director of Communications, and he's really been one of the pivotal people in the province on this, so it's better to.
So yeah, it's really status quo at the moment. We do know that staff are drafting regulations. It is with legal, it's gone back and forth quite a bit. They are anticipated in the spring, but we'll, you know, they can't promise anything. But as Andrew mentioned, it only has to go to cabinet now, which they meet every week. So once the regulations are ready, it will go to cabinet. So we're hoping, hopefully in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Thanks, Council, for your question. Council Harding.
Yes, just a question. You talked about organics, negotiating the terms, is that going back out to tender again, or? No, we have a, there's a clause, it was a five-year contract with a, or a six-year contract with a five-year renewal. So we're simply working out with that pricing increase mechanism. And there were terms in the original bid and the original agreement as to what those terms should look like, but we still need to kind of formalize it, write an extension agreement and take that to the board for approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. And I'll just note, councilors, when you hit your speak button, your microphone will come on automatically, so it'll be like that until we get it switched over at the break. So just wait your turn if you're pressing your light, and I'll try and get everyone in order as they come. Any further questions before we move to the next part of the presentation? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ward, and.
Thank you.
Welcome to whoever comes next.
Thank you, Andrew. So the next part of the presentation, we're going to get Dwight to, to talk to the operations. As you know, Dwight is taking on the role as acting GM for KTA. So he's been very detailed involved in the day-to-day operations, so any questions on the budget, he'll be able to address for you. You'll see in your package that we did provide, KTA is a unique reporting entity, we did provide to you four revenue and expense schedules, one for the total operations, one for the core, four partner core operations, and you do have Annapolis and Digby there as well, which we won't really be referring to today. So I'll turn it over to Dwight, I'm hoping you're there. Does he have to be? There he is.
We can see you.
No, I can't hear you, Dwight.
We just can't hear you yet, Dwight, just give us one minute. Do you want to try again? Has anything changed? Oh, not yet. Okay, try now.
Good morning.
Here we are, we can hear you and see you.
That's great. First, I apologize I can't be there in person, but schedule's changed here a little bit. And so thanks for, thanks for having me. I'll, I'll take Sunny's introduction and maybe just tweak it a little bit. I guess I was brought on as the executive director for this interim IMSA project, and unfortunately, the GM at King's Transit left us back in late November, early December, so I'm not sure I'm really, I guess I'm, I'm filling in, I'm not really technically the acting GM, but I guess in the short term here, I have been taking over that role, you know, until we decide what the appropriate fill-in is, so. So the budget process at King's Transit this year was, was definitely a little, a little different. A lot of new staff there from all the management-type positions, and then of course with the, with the exit of the GM, it, it presented some challenges, but I think everybody pulled together and, and came up with, you know, with a good plan forward. You know, the second point with King's Transit is we're in this, this, I guess, interim period while we're working on the ISIP funding program with our Phase 1 studies, which we do have approval for and going to be moving forward very quickly on those, just looking at, you know, the routes and the service levels and all that. And then, of course, moving into the Phase 2 piece, which is looking at the appropriate equipment that we would, to bring into the, to the organization. So we'll start at the, I guess, Sunny, I can't see the screen, so I apologize for that. So I guess we'll look at the, the first slide, which is the, the total operations slide, if we can pull that one up, or maybe it is up. You know, we're, we're looking at fares increasing, you know, roughly 10%, and that's purely a volume basis. We're not looking at changing the, the dollar amount, the $4 base fare would stay in place. But ridership overall is, is increasing. We're getting back to very, very close to the, to the pre-COVID numbers, and we anticipate that that will, that will continue. So from that perspective, again, a 10% increase in, in that base revenue from fares. One of the other ones we'll see here is mechanic labor. We traditionally had two mechanics working in the garage, we've gone to three. So basically what it is, is some of those billable hours will, will increase in the coming year, so that's, that's what we see there. We did this year receive a COVID relief grant from the province, 332 or 23, can't remember exactly the amount. That was a one-time contribution, so we see that line there, sorry, 332, that we're not budgeting for, for next year, because again, it was a one-time grant from, from the province. So that's really, you know, the, the main pieces from, you know, the revenue side. We've got another slide, a couple to look at those operating grants. You know, from an expense perspective, you know, from a salaries group, we are up that .5 position, which is a Director of Finance. After my first, you know, four or five months working on this project, it became clear that both organizations needed to beef up the, the finance accounting side of the world. You know, I had some great conversations with Andrew and his gang, and, ah, thank you. And, you know, internally at KTA, so we have started the process, getting some, a job description and job ads in place, and we will work on that. So if you look at the, like, say, the salary side, we did leave the GM costs in there too, so that's the, you know, the net increase there. From an operator's perspective, we're up about one full-time position in that group to make sure that we have some, you know, enough spare drivers to fill in for vacations, illnesses and the like there. Fuel being probably one of our biggest costs and one of our biggest unknowns going forward. You can see that we're significantly over budget this year, and we're going to, again, for '24, budget roughly the same. You know, we're, we're on the municipal fuel purchase contract, and we've been running anywhere between, you know, $1.65 a liter to $1.85 a liter on a weekly basis, bouncing up and down and for different durations. So we've, you know, we weighted out an average price there, looking at our typical fuel consumptions on a monthly basis, and have come up with, you know, with that number for, for 2024. Similar to Valley Waste, government's insurances, our insurance has been a wildcard for us. We saw a significant increase in 2022, '23, and, you know, the industry is again suggesting we're going to continue to see some increases in '24, or '23, '24, so. The repairs and maintenance one is a very difficult one to nail down. The current KTA fleet, fleet in general is old with a lot of miles. You know, we're looking at units with, you know, that are, you know, 15 years old and, you know, well over a million kilometers on, on them. So we continue to, to, I guess, baby them through at this point. You know, the, the garage mechanics have done an excellent job in keeping those units, you know, safe and on the road, but there are some, some major expenses that do occur. And, you know, that's the, I guess, the mandate for the next, you know, 12 to 18 months until we have Phase 2 of, of the ISIP program behind us and hopefully, you know, new equipment ordered and, and on site from a model operations perspective. You know, the management fee is the, is the overhead costs that are allocated out to the core group and to the other two partners, and then the other expenses are, you know, all those day-to-day expenses, you know, from, you know, from the organization. One of the things in those other expenses, we've realized that the inside maintenance of our buses, the cleaning piece, we've had numerous different contracts and different approaches over the years. One of the mandates this year is to, to, to up that cleaning so the buses are in great shape for, for the passengers that are using it. So I guess if we flip to the, to the next slide quickly, it really is just a recap of this one, but this is the, the piece for, for the core partners, which Kings County is part of. And you can see that, you know, for this year, we are forecasting a small surplus. Again, most of that is a result of the, the COVID relief grant that we applied back to operations. And, you know, the offset of that obviously are the things like fuel and some of the other costs that, that we have endured during this year. And again, one piece I did miss on a, from a wage perspective, again, similar to what we used over in the Valley Waste side, you know, we're looking at that CPI type of an increase of, you know, where it settles over here between 5 and 6%, you know, for the, for those wages. And again, we can see then, if we go back up into the, as we put in the, in the revenue section, from those operating grants, you know, Kings County's operating grant will, will increase about 4.76% when we compare it to last year. So I guess we can pop over the next two pieces there, which are the two service providers, and we can go to the, you know, the budget influences page, because we go one more page and one more page, please. Perfect, thanks. So again, these are just the, the highlights that we talked about as we went through the numbers from ridership, mechanics' labors, operating grants, and then I guess just that management fee to the two partners. They do share in those common overhead costs also, you know, based on, on the ridership numbers that we track for both the core and then the two, the two service partnering areas. Go to the next slide. Again, talked about the salary changes as far as, then that's both wages for the operators and for the, the salary staff or admin staff also, the 50% cost sharing for the CFO or the Director of Finance CFO position, fuel, insurance, and that aging problem that we have with, you know, with, with the current fleet. If we flip to the next page, from a capital perspective, you know, we've looked through this and really, you know, the, the expenses, well, we've, if we, as we start the Phase 1 ISIP, and I apologize, a little typo there, that should be ICIP. The, you know, the $50,000 will, and start that project hopefully before the end of the current fiscal year. The remaining $200,000 will, will come in the, in the '23, '24 fiscal year to, to finish up the, the study spa or part. We did receive a million dollars in the rural, rural ridership program from the federal government for things like shelters, bus stops and upgrades there, so it's an 80-20 split. So the million dollars, the federal government would pick up 800, we would finance the, the 200,000 internally. We do have to hire a project manager for the, the ISIP program, so that's that line. And then we look at the, the big capital spending. We, as a group, have been approved for $11.96 million in, in capital funding for new equipment, and that's, and it is focused on either electrical electrification or, you know, hybrid-type equipment. It's, it's again, trying to reduce the, the carbon footprint in, in greenhouse gas emissions. So that's what we've, you know, projected over the next few years that way. A little bit of equipment and some billing expenses over the term to just some normal day-to-day type upgrades there. And then on the bottom section, you can see where those, those funding sources would, would come from. So that, you know, over the next three years should get us through the, the ISIP program and, and bring the organization from an equipment perspective, hopefully from a route and ridership perspective, you know, into, into a very, very strong position, so. So that's good on that one. For the next slide. So this would be looking at the reserve funds that we have currently in place and the allocations there of what, and where those funds would come from going forward. So we can see, you know, some of the big ones there for 2024 anyhow, that's, that's what we're looking at. We do have some short-term financing, you know, TBRs in place for the, for the ISIP piece, especially when we get into the vehicle purchase part. You know, in discussions with the Department of Municipal Affairs provincially who are monitored or, or who are managing that program for the federal government, you know, we can actually put in monthly draws against those funds, so I think our cash flow should be pretty good through that as we, as we move forward. But again, we do have the, the temporary borrowing resolutions in place in case we do need them, so. So that, that slide, and if we go to the, the last one. Again, those are the items that, from a capital perspective, we will be looking at for the '24 period, so that should be all of it, felt like a sort of capital reserve. So if we go to the, the last page there. So that's where we are with the current open balance and the capital reserve fund. We do get another grant from the province, which is called PTAP. That $375,000 comes through on an annual basis, but it is restricted to capital, so we would see it there. And then the $350,000, which we would need in addition to the regular contributions and what we have in the reserve to, to get through the, the ISIP program. So we can see down the bottom from the core group what those allocations. So we can see down the bottom from the core group what those allocations are based on a regular eighty thousand dollars, which is the current annual capital contribution from the, the core group. What additional funding we would need to get to the, cover the total three hundred and fifty thousand there, so. That's, that's the reserve fund. And if we go to the, now we have the last page. Again, just a quick summary of, of what we, what we have there. You know, the, the usage of the reserve fund would be something we would have to take to the board and get a final decision as to whether we would use the, the reserve for some of that core funding for the ISIP program or whether we would, you know, contribute the, the full funds and leave the reserve in place. But that's, that's for, you take to the board, which I'm sure will take back to the individual councils at that point. So I think that, that should wrap it up for the, for the KTA side.
Okay, thank you very much Dwight. Back to you, Sunny.
Yeah, thank you. So for, for the purpose of this council, I think what's important, like I said, because we're, we're coming before board approval, is we wanted to demonstrate what would look like be the maximum ask for the council for the upcoming season for operations and for capital. The slide on the ISIP program does show that only the four core units are sharing in that program right now. There was a lot of discussion on that back in the, in the spring on that. So right now, any money that, that is needed from KTA on top of the federal and provincial funding, we're showing it flowing out of a reserve fund, coming in as contributions from the units. And like Dwight said, on board, RFD to the board next month, that could come in a number of ways. It could be a direct request to the municipal units. It could be a financing with the guarantee. It could be, there's a number of options. So we want to show the, the extent of the maximum ask that we would expect that Kings would, would see for twenty-four fiscal year.
That makes sense, thank you. Any questions from council this morning on the presentation? No questions for Dwight or Sunny? Okay, thank you. So you folks are, are off the hook for the rest of the day? Thank you very much. Thanks for being with us this morning. Thank you Dwight for, for joining us online and for your presentation, and we appreciate your time this morning. And you'll be hearing from us.
Thanks everyone, bye-bye.
So at this point in the meeting, I would look for a motion for Committee of the Whole to receive the presentations on the Valley Region Solid Waste Resource Management Authority Budget two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, and the Kings Transit Authority Budget two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, as provided on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. For information, moved by Councilor Meisner and Councilor Killam. Any discussion on the motion to receive the presentation? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. This brings us to item seven of our agenda this morning, page twenty. Amendments to Policy Admin dash zero-one dash twenty-two, Council and Committee Video Conference. And we have with us this morning Vicki Brook, our policy analyst here at the county. Welcome to Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, good morning, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present recommended amendments to Policy Admin zero-one dash zero-two-two, the Council and Committee Video Conference Policy. I've never considered myself particularly adept at technology, but that's a new one for me. I'm just going to carry on.
Oh, here we go.
So this policy is enabled by Section nineteen A of the Municipal Government Act. Addition of this section was a more recent amendment to the act, happened after COVID, and it enables a meeting to be conducted by electronic means when established by a procedural policy of council. This section of the act goes on to address a series of criteria for holding meetings electronically such that they are, are legal under the act. The current video conference policy addresses how the municipality will conduct virtual meetings of council and committees, and includes details on notice given to the public for virtual meetings, voting, how closed session and conflicts of interest are to be handled, and how technological challenges will be addressed in the context of a virtual meeting. Kings has had a policy for virtual meetings since late two thousand and twenty-one, and while the policy was not due for review at this time, staff have identified a series of amendments that will hopefully make the policy more administrative friendly or reasonable, if you will, and improve understanding of the policy. Beginning at the top of the policy, we're recommending a change from video conference to virtual in the title. This change aligns with the MGA and the words that the act uses, and we're recommending a wholesale change from video conference to virtual or virtual meeting throughout the policy. In the purpose section, we have also proposed to identify a preference for holding meetings in person while maintaining a commitment to making meetings accessible for members of council or committees that need to participate virtually. Another amendment I'd like to draw the committee's attention to is in Section four point six-four, which is a recommended addition to the policy. This section provides for consideration of the municipality's ability to meet the technical and staffing requirements to have one or more members attend a meeting virtually. This is an important addition for staff, as any virtual component to a meeting in essence means that staff are coordinating two meetings at the same time, one in person and one online. And so consideration should be given to staff's ability to conduct the meetings. And we'll say, without having consulted them, I think the recording secretaries do a great job of coordinating multiple meetings at one time, but it is something that we would like to have provided for in the policy. Staff are also recommending addition of Section four point seven, which states that if one member is attending a meeting virtually, the staff lead may consider inviting all members to attend virtually. And this helps address the technical and administrative or staffing requirements that come with virtual meetings. It's not anticipated that we would use this a lot, but it is an important addition for us, that there may be a case where we have, of a committee of say ten, that we have six or seven people who are unable to attend in person, and it might make more sense to hold a meeting fully virtually. The final proposed amendment I'd like to highlight is a great deal of text and structural changes throughout the policy. In addition to changing video conference to virtual, we're recommending a change from clerk throughout to the use of either staff lead or recording secretary to more accurately reflect how meetings are organized and conducted administratively, and as well as a number of changes to provide, improve clarity, understanding, address ambiguity, and rephrase items that were more procedural into policy statements. With that, the recommended motion is on the screen, and I'm able to take any questions of the committee.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions this morning? I had a comment that I, I did want to add, and I don't want to speak for Mayor Matart or anyone else who occupies the chair of any of our meetings, but having the two meetings at the same time is also provides additional considerations when it comes to voting and getting people to speak in the right order and generally just a smooth flow of meetings. So while I think staff have done also a great job at identifying that, I wanted to add that from our perspective, it, I can see the background of how staff, the effort it takes and is required to pull off the two meetings. So it is a, quite a, a bigger burden, I think, than you initially think when you're just like, oh, I can just attend virtually. The effort required from multiple departments of staff is quite significant. And then it's one other thing for them to think about while they're already trying to record the governance of the county, but also for the chair as well in trying to record the proceedings of the meeting, so, or trying to manage the proceedings of the meeting, sorry. So I wanted to add that little bit of context as well, that I think that this is good work and overdue and going to be very useful for us going forward. And I think we've done a pretty good job navigating it in the last couple of years despite all the ways that curveballs have been thrown at us. Mayor Matart, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The, I echo your comments and endorse them all. The, I think it needs to be said, perhaps for the purposes of the record, that, that the old rule, of course, was that to be present at a meeting meant that you had to be physically present at a meeting. COVID came along and things had to change. And now there's been permissions through our legislation that allow these types of virtual meetings or mixed in-person and virtual meetings. And people are considered to be present if they're online. The, then we fall into the, and, and that's all fine because it's, even if it's, we go totally virtual, that's okay, but I, I point out that in the past in other jurisdictions, not ours, there were, there was a lot of angst amongst the public where counselors resided for six months of the year in Florida and attended their meetings virtually, which meant they weren't in the area to do their constituency work with. And I don't know how much consideration senior government has given to that issue. And then there's the issue of in-camera meetings. In-camera meetings by their very nature are meetings that discuss contractual matters that have not yet been finalized and would be, if the information that was being discussed at those meetings became public, it would put the municipality at risk contractually, subject to actions, legal actions to be taken by those persons whose submissions on contracts we were discussing, because it might cause some damage to them. And to hold an in-camera meeting virtually, we are unable to guarantee that there aren't other persons that are within earshot of, of these meetings that are held in camera. So I just wanted to do a little underlining of those particular things and I'm perfectly, having been pulled along this far by senior government into this position, I'm, I'm persuaded that it's something that needs to be done. But perhaps when we have an opportunity to review it once again down the road, we can take some of those items into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for those points. Excellent thoughts. Mayor, Councilor Armstrong, go ahead.
I understand the need for this. I'm not a fan. I, I think the whole time COVID was going on, we all miss having the personal contact of, of our colleagues in the chambers. And, and I, you know, I, I draw attention to the fact that in one of the bullet points it says specify that in-person meetings are the preference of the council. And then you jump down to four point seven, which says that the CAO can invite all attendees to attend virtually. And then you get into, to, there's a possibility that you could get into a circumstance where people become complacent and say, oh, you know, like, I, I don't feel like going out tonight. You know, I, I think I'll just go virtually, or I've got a sniffle, or, you know, this type of thing, and I'm much more comfortable sitting here than sitting there and, and all of that stuff. And, and then you get into, the other problem that I have with it is, and we've run into it in these chambers, is that the feed isn't good. You're only getting bits and pieces of a conversation. You're not hearing people the way they want to be heard, the, you know, if you can't see their face, you, you, you lose something in the interpretation. So this is not my preference as far as meetings go, and I would like to make it so that in-person is always our go-to, and it's only in very, you know, extenuating circumstances that we would use virtual, but those are, are just my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Armstrong. I share many of those sentiments. So this is a recommendation to council to provide seven days' notice. So while there's not a lot of time to make amendments, we're also not in a rush, so we can take this as we will and we'll consider it at council again in March. So you may want to bring some amendments forward at that point. Anything else from council this morning for Ms. Brook? Ms. Brook, any last words?
Three, Deputy Mayor, no real comments of any substance. I would note, we did look back to see how many virtual meetings had been held for either council or committee of the whole in the previous year. And it was only a few, and I believe that they were early in two thousand and twenty-two, so it has been a while since we had held a, a fully virtual meeting. And it was staff's understanding that it's council's preference to hold meetings in person, face-to-face for a, a great variety of reasons.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, we have a recommendation that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council provide seven days' notice per Section forty-eight subsection one Municipal Government Act to adopt amendments to Policy Admin dash zero-one dash zero-two-two, Council and Committee Video Conference Policy. Do I have a move of the motion? Moved by Council Hurdle, seconded by Council Allen. Further discussion on the motion at hand. No discussion on the motion, seeing none. All in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I will move on to item eight, financial services. We have Mr. Scott McKay present with us this morning to discuss amendments to Policy FIN dash zero-five dash zero-zero-nine, Personal Property Tax Exemption Policy. So the floor is yours, Mr. McKay.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Deputy Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here. This is an annual visit we make every year to discuss the personal property tax exemption, no different this year, except we have added a few text changes to the, to our proposal this year. So the recommendation to this request for decision is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council give seven days' notice per Section forty-eight dash one Municipal Government Act to amend Policy Finance zero-five dash zero-zero-nine, Personal Property Tax Exemption, as detailed in the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three request for decision. So the proposed amendments for the policy this year are as follows. Qualifying household income is proposed to be increased, the threshold increased from forty-two thousand dollars to forty-five thousand dollars. The maximum exemption is proposed to increase from four hundred and ten dollars per household up to five hundred and ten per household. The calculation of both of those, by the way, is built into the policy itself. And we're looking to clarify the policy in several additional areas as well, indicating that the exemption is limited absolutely to owner-occupied residentially classified properties, and that the amount of the exemption will not exceed the residential tax portion of the applicable property tax bill. And finally, that the chief administrative officer be given the flexibility with respect to extending the program deadline on an annual basis in extenuating circumstances. So the financial implications for the changes that we are proposing this year, we have budgeted six hundred and fifty-six, last year we had budgeted six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and utilized eighty-three percent of that amount, but this year we are looking to increase the budgeted amount up to seven hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and also to increase our efforts to promote the program as well this year. So the implementation for the coming year, if, if approved, with that, first of all, the staff, we do maintain a database of people that currently participate in the program. Those thirteen hundred and seventy households would receive a direct mail application from us. Staff would also utilize the municipality's social media and website to promote the program as usual. Staff would promote the tax bill through the tax bill newsletter as well as the MOK Today e-newsletter. And new for two thousand and twenty-three, staff feels that utilization of a flyer service in an effort to reach a broader audience and one that staff feel will, is one that staff will feel that we will catch some households that otherwise may be slipping through the cracks in the past. So frontline staff, I should also recognize, are also always engaged with the public to inform them of the program on an ongoing basis. So once again, the recommendation for this request for decision is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council- the Whole recommend municipal council give seven days' notice per section 48, 1 Municipal Government Act to amend policy Finance 05-009, personal property tax exemption, as detailed in the February 21, 2023 request for decision. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council this morning? I don't see any. I have one. Do we expect that the utilization rate will remain the same? Like, will, will it still be this year 83%? Is there, does staff have like a target, like, you know, hopefully maybe 90? Optimally 100% of folks who fall within the, the income bracket would know and apply and be successful? Yeah, is, is, I guess some of those implementation factors, are they designed to really rate bump that level up?
So I appreciate the question, Deputy Mayor. That 83% was a little disappointing this past year. However, we did increase the budget last year by 40%. So that had some, some impact on it. So the goal is always going to be that 100%. And when we sat down as a revenue team to, to discuss options and ways of reaching people a little better, the flyer service that we used a couple of years ago to reach people when we extended the tax due date, we felt was really effective, and it probably hit the target market that we really want to, want to reach. So goal is 100%, and we think adding that'll do it.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that answer. And yeah, as always, this is a program we should be proud of and push as much as possible. Mayor Matar.
So for plain language, for those that might be listening or wish to listen in the future to this meeting, if you earn as a household less than $45,000 a year, you can apply for a property tax exemption.
Yes.
To the extent of?
Through, through the Deputy Mayor, through, the exemption would be to a maximum of $510, based on what is the maximum, what is the residential component on your tax bill? So if your tax bill has a $400 residential component, that would be what you would get. If your tax component, residential tax component was 2,000, then you would get the 510.
Thank you.
Good, good clarification, Mayor Matar. Good to put it in plain speak. Any further questions before I look for the motion? Seeing none, Mr. McKay has been kind enough to read it for us. So would I have a mover of the motion? Moved by Council Meiser, seconded by Council Armstrong. Any discussion on the motion? Other than a big thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Just waiting for our buttons. Oh, sorry, Chloe. There we go. And for those listening or who may be unfamiliar with our processes, there's a 10-second delay between when our online electronic voting comes up and the time we have to push our buttons. And sometimes we still don't make it in that 10 seconds. But today we all have, thankfully, in unanimous consent to approve the amendments to the personal property tax exemption policy. So thank you for being with us this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all the work you do on us. Next, we have item nine, council item, and we have some folks joining us in the audience this morning. So welcome to Committee of the Whole. I will turn it over to you, Council Kilim, to give an introduction of your item, and it's on page 37 of our agenda package.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, we do have residents from the Burlington area and other areas in the North Mountain, I hope, probably listening. As everybody knows, Council Granger and myself represent the bulk of the North Mountain, and it's been exposed to aerial spraying for some time. And it's getting to a point where it's becoming a very stressful situation for the residents up there. In fact, last fall in September, as you can see with the letter from Doug and Pat Kemp, they spent three to four hours a day encampment in, in the woods to keep the aerial spraying from happening, because as it indicates, they cannot spray on humans. However, they seem to be able to spray on our diversity. Just a couple of things, it's kind of, I don't know where we go from here. We pass resolutions and recommendations, which our Mayor Matar has responded to and written letters to the premier and other entities. But we haven't, as I know, gotten a response back as to whether they're entertaining banning on the aerial spraying. It's the aerial spraying that's the issue. There's other ways that they could, they could take care of some of this from the ground level. But the residents have asked if we could pass a resolution that regarding getting written permission from adjacent landowners before spraying is, is permitted. And, you know, requiring 100% of the landowners that there will be no spraying permit issued. And the question is, can this, can we do this at municipal level and where we could go from here? It, it, it's kind of strange at this day and age that we have to deal with this issue. I see in December that they had a federal conference in Montreal regarding the protection of biodiversity in our forests and water. And yet, it hasn't infiltrated down to action as far as the governments are concerned to protect our, our diversity in our forests and at the local level. And where do we go from here to, to put extra pressure to try to get a response? Spring's coming, and I'm sure the residents of the North Mountain do not want to spend three to four hours a day on an encampment to prevent the spraying from happening. It did work last September because spring did not happen. But it seems to be an ongoing issue, spring and fall. And I guess I'm looking maybe for some help in what we can do further to, to get this stopped and, and, you know, help the folks in the North Mountain areas. I mean, maybe some people think there's not a lot of folks in the North Mountain, but really, the information that I received that there's over 5,000 of our Kings County residents that live on the North Mountain. And, you know, over 2,000 residences. So we're, we're not dealing with just a small group of folks that want this stopped. It's, it's bigger than that. And it'd be nice to be able to represent our folks up there in a stronger method. So I guess I'm asking, first of all, the question is, can, can this kind of a recommendation at the municipal level stand up? Maybe I'll pass that through Deputy Mayor to whomever may have an answer here today.
Thank you, Councilor Kilim. Mr. Deputy CIO, do you, oh, you are reaching for your mic, so I will turn it to Deputy CIO Frost.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So there, so certainly spraying as far as agricultural and forestry lands are not in the jurisdiction of the municipality. Having said that, so we do have the, the ability to make bylaws in relation to herbicide pesticide, but it does have the exemption that it's not related to agricultural use and forestry use. If there's another way, we can certainly, and we can have some discussions with, whether it's agricultural, forestry department, that type of thing, to see if there might be another way that we could put a ban on it. But I would not be optimistic that we would have the jurisdiction, to be clear.
Thank you, Deputy CIO. Our local MLA, Chris Palmer, sits on the Natural Resources Committee. And I don't know if there's been a direct contact with some of our work with respect to representing the local area, has, if he has received the, the resolutions or not, I'm not sure. I think he might have. But is there a way of sending these concerns and any possible recommendations directly to our MLA? And then he could pass it on to that standing committee that is in the provincial legislature?
I can, Mayor Matar would know the answer. Was the MLA copied on the letters to Minister Holman and NSFM?
No, the letter, the original letter of September 22nd, Deputy Mayor, was, that's 2022, of course, was sent to the premier and to the Minister of Environment and Climate Change, under whose portfolio this resides. I didn't specifically single out MLAs because they're, while they're representatives of the government and the people, they don't, they don't control the portfolio. That's not to say that we, we couldn't send copies of these letters. My second letter, of course, was the end of December to the Federation of Municipalities to ask them to consider reaching out to the government as well, and to put it on the agenda, the Rural Caucus agenda of the NSFM. So those two efforts are the only, the only written efforts that we have made. My understanding is, and I'd be interested if anyone in the room, including the gallery, knew, is that there has been an action commenced against Health Canada. And I know that those, from another life, I know that those things go extremely glacially in terms of movement. But I would be interested to know what the status of that particular action was. In the meantime, we could always have it confirmed by our legal, but for my part, I agree with what, what the Deputy CIO has just said, is that jurisdictionally, we being creatures of the province itself and the province reserving unto itself the mandate to deal with this particular matter and exclude the municipalities from any ability to stray into herbicides or insecticides that are used for the purposes of agricultural matters or forestry matters. I mean, that's pretty clear that they're saying municipalities can't get in the game. Not to say that we can't continue to make noise. We, we, we can do that. We can lobby. That, that's what we're here for, even, we're, we're the representatives of people, notwithstanding that provincial government or some other level of government reserves onto itself the exclusive jurisdiction over the issues.
Going to go to Council Granger, then Council Kilim again?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering about the Federation of Agriculture. Does this not fall under an agricultural boundary? I'm just throwing that out as a question because I really don't know. And would that be in some of our interests to go there?
Having some familiarity with the Federation of Agriculture, I would say that they represent farms and farmers, and that they don't, this wouldn't, they don't represent any associations, to my knowledge, that are directly forestry-related or that would have practices of aerial spraying. So I don't think it would be something that they would have a position on, aerial spraying anyway.
Right. Thank you.
But that's just me. It might be worth some further exploration. Council Kilim?
Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any update regarding the recommendation resolution that we passed at the fall conference to the Rural Caucus to bring that up in the spring session. Is that hopefully on the agenda? Does anyone know that? And if not, can we make sure that it is on that agenda to be recommended to the UNFM, possibly in the annual meeting in the fall, unless there's a, hopefully another one sooner than that? But just a question.
Council Armstrong, would you like to take this one?
Excuse me? Yeah, go ahead.
As our, as our local representative to the NSFM.
NSFM Spring Conference, at, at this point, does not have an agenda and/or items on its agenda. It is, I believe, May 3rd through 5th, coming up at the Digby, sorry, at the Digby Pines. I know that at the fall conference, at the Rural Caucus, at the fall conference, this was brought up, not only by Council Kilim, but also by representatives from Annapolis County. And I believe there was Cumberland and Colchester County also had spoken to NSFM about it. NSFM has just in, at the end of January, gone under, finally got its restructuring done. Up until that point, NSFM was bound by certain resolutions, none of them which included forestry or anything like that. The changes have been made, and we're working on the policies and the bylaws now to support those. And we will be instituting what we call areas of special interest, which one will be environment. And therefore, we can take on things such as this. So I think that we can bring it up at the spring conference. I can ask them to put it on the agenda. And hopefully, we will have enough people there that we can have a fulsome discussion and see where we go from there. And I also think that it, this is, you know, this is very of the moment to us here in Kings County, but we're not alone. You know, we heard that at the fall conference. So I think that bringing the other counties, such as Annapolis, Colchester, Cumberland, anyone that has any kind of a forestry base to it, should be, have the opportunity to speak to it as well. Strength in numbers is certainly a good thing with anything like this. So I'll, I'll, we'll make sure that the NSFM has it on the spring conference. Or I'll ask them. I'm not in a position to tell, but I will ask them if they will put that on the agenda for the spring conference.
Thank you. That, that helps to know it's coming forward, and we can maybe lobby a little stronger for that particular conference and get something done. Anyway, that's pretty well what I, I have here. And possibly some of the members of the community, I don't know, would they be permitted to speak if they wish at this time, or would they have to wait to the end of the meeting?
I think with the agreement of council, we can allow members of the public to speak on the item. And we have nothing else really between now and comments from the public anyway, other than other business and some committee reports. So do I have the consent of council to allow some public comment at this time? I can make a formal moat, or I can take the nods. I'm seeing nods. Yep? Everybody? Yep. I don't want to do it without unanimous consent. Are there folks in the audience that wish to address council at this point in time? I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and civic for the record. And then maybe before we do as well, I mean, I would say, Council Kilim, the recommendation you proposed in your agenda item today specifically suggests, or specifically speaks to the notion of permission and getting written permission. So we know that, well, we don't know, no, but our Deputy CIO has advised us today that banning is probably not an option due to the specific subsection of the MJ that says we're not allowed to make bylaws banning herbicides or because of the, or just in residential uses, we can't ban them for agriculture and forestry uses. But there may be, in your recommendation, you're looking for staff to explore whether or not the idea of written permission could be put in place.
Yes.
Is that something, is that a motion you still wish to make?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So we'll talk about that after we hear from these folks.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome to council.
Me? Yep. My name's Doug Kemp. I live in Burlington. My own 100 acres, more or less, are my wife and, my wife and I. We're not asking you to ban any herbicide. We're asking you to, who makes the bylaws in this county?
We do.
You do? Yeah. So if, we're not saying, we're, this is a roadblock to the aerial spraying. They won't get, they wouldn't get, there's, I think, 10 adjacent landowners to this property. All of them were at our site. Nobody was asked whether they were okay with them spraying. They'd be drifting all their properties. So why can't you guys make a bylaw saying you can spray, just have to have permission from all the adjacent? from all the adjacent landowners? Why can't you do that?
And that is the motion that Counsel Killam has brought today, so we'll have that discussion on that suggestion in a moment, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? See nobody jumping up to the microphone. We will have comments from the public again here in a moment, so feel free, if you have further things to add to the conversation when we get to item eleven, you're welcome to come back up. So Counsel Killam, you have a proposed recommendation. Would you like to make it? It's in front of us, and it's been, you feel free to read it into the record.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I would like to recommend that, as Doug Kemp has said, that we're not out to ban spraying in this recommendation, we're just trying to make a bylaw that would put in the mix, hopefully get listened to. And the by, the particular recommendation would be to, before any written permission has to be received to the municipality by adjacent landowners before any spraying is committed, is permitted on lands, on forestry lands, specifically.
So your motion is?
It's?
Has written in the package?
Yeah, it's pretty well written in the package.
The Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council direct the CIO to investigate if it is within the municipality's jurisdiction to make it mandatory for any aerial spraying of herbicide, to require the written permission of all adjacent landowners before spraying is permitted.
Thank you.
So we'll just add in there of?
I would move that if?
Yeah. Do we have a second of the motion? Seconded by Counsel Granger. Discussion on the motion in front of us. Counsel Armstrong?
I certainly understand everything that's being said here, and I understand the frustration that the people living on the mountain are having with this, as I said, on the, in the province as a whole as well. The only issue that I have with this particular recommendation is the word permission, because we just said that legally, we can't grant permission or deny permission for spraying. So by saying that it requires written permission, meaning that if they don't get written permission, then we deny, somebody denies them the right to spray. We just said we don't have that jurisdiction. So that's the only, that's the only word that I have a problem with here, is permission. So I'm not sure that I can support it based on that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Ooh, for lighting up the board here. And so I think, and just for all of council's sake, this is just a request for staff to look further into the issue, and that they will come back with some further information on what we are specifically allowed to do as far as our bylaws go under the MGA. So they will have further information when that, it's hard to have that, this conversation without the background. Counsel Granger, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do agree with you, Counsel Armstrong, perhaps permission could be changed to notification or something along those lines, because I do hear what you're saying.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Hurdle?
I'm just wondering about the intent of the motion, simply because it's to investigate with, have the CIO investigate our jurisdiction, but have, do we not know our jurisdiction at this point with the answer from the Deputy CIO?
I think we know that we're not allowed to ban herbicide, but the MGA doesn't specifically speak to whether or not we have to, and I'll let Mayor Matard go next, because he's the resident expert. But it doesn't necessarily speak to any bylaws that may, and I think this is the approach of the community, that they're coming, saying, is there anything else that can be done to add a different level of notification or permission on top of that? So we may not be able to ban or not ban, but I think the community is asking us to investigate if there's anything else we can do when it comes to notification, or if there's a, basically like a loophole, I think is what we're looking for. I'm seeing some smiles from the audience. Does that answer your question, Counselor? They're not, and as they've stated, they're not looking for us to ban or not ban anything, but to investigate what our options may be.
Somewhat, but my concern being, we're not the conduit that receives any of the applications for the spraying, so to even be in the place to inform, we, we wouldn't have that information, information necessarily.
Anything further?
No.
Okay. Mayor Matard?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think that Counsel Armstrong nailed it as far as the status quo is concerned. And my, and I appreciate the comments of Counsel Granger, that one might change the word permission to notification, but I don't think that's really what the folks are interested in, because there's already notification of a sort, because in advance of aerial spraying being done, notice is publicly given. One might argue about how widespread the information is received. So I think that in the public, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they would like to have the word permission left in there. But then I go back to the comments of Counsel Armstrong, who's, I think, said correctly that, that it's another, it would be perceived as another attempt of, for the municipality to deny, and it's not within our jurisdiction to deny, nor is it within our jurisdiction, therefore, to delegate our authority to deny. And this, I'm not saying don't pass this motion, it's perfectly in order to have another set of eyes on it and a report to come back to us, I think that's appropriate, but we, if, if one doesn't have the authority in the first instance, one doesn't have the right to delegate the authority that it doesn't have in the first instance. So I, I don't look for a great result from this, but I have no objection to the motion going forward. And I can be obviously convinced by others who would come back into the room and say, oh, yes, you do have the authority, so.
Right. I couldn't have said it better myself, Mayor Matard, thank you. That was, the authority to delegate was somewhere in my brain, and, thank you. Deputy CIO?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I think this might, we might be able to make this a little bit clearer, so really, what I believe the ask is that staff return with a report as to how we could look to ban basically aerial spraying in Kings County. So as I said to you, the MGA is pretty clear about what we can do, but we could also come back with more information on what some of the possibilities or what our recommendations of staff might be to, to do that. So I think there is some, if we're getting down into the wording of what this motion says, you know, the mayor said it, we don't really have the jurisdiction, but is there other ways that the municipality could certainly promote the ban of aerial spraying?
Thank you, Deputy CIO. Counsel Killam?
Thank you. I think the intent, too, is to put a focus on this whole issue by, through our municipality and, and what we would like to see happen in our forestry lands, which the more focused on the issue, maybe possibly the province or the feds might pick up on what we're trying to do here and pass something concrete on, on actually banning aerial spraying on our forests. So it's, I sort of felt that probably it wouldn't go too far, but it does put another focus on, on this whole issue, and, and I think that's important at this point, and we'll see what happens from here, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You know, oh, go ahead, yep.
Playing tag here. Just like to leave that term, permission, in place on the recommendation.
I think, based on the discussion, that the motion is, is fine to stand today. It's a recommendation to council. So again, it is something that we will reconsider, and if the wording needs to be adjusted when we get to council, but this kind of puts a bookmark in it right now and gets it in to our council package, so that if there's changes that need to be made at that point or additional things you wish to bring forward, then, then that can be done. But I think we all agree that the general senses, we're looking for staff's input or report further to what they've already sort of given us on how we may meet the concerns of the community, which is aerial spraying and permissions. Okay. With all that being said, are we comfortable moving ahead with the motion? It's been moved and seconded by Counsel Killam and Counsel Granger. Questions being called? All in favor or otherwise, please signify now. It's not a graceful process sometimes, but we do get there eventually. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. That concludes item number nine. Item ten is Board and Committee Reports. We have one written report for us to consider this morning from Counsel Meisner, Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. Counsel Meisner, do you have anything you wish to add to your report?
Nothing further, thank you.
Any questions for Counsel Meisner on the report she's brought forward? And any oral reports this morning from any other counselor? Counsel Granger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have one for the Fire Services Advisory Committee. We meet four times a year, and it's usually right after the request for our committee reports. So we figured out our new meeting dates for the year. We also had Dan Stovall from Kings Remo make a presentation for the vulnerable persons registry, which I think is great. If you have a village in your district, you might want to make sure that they have enough of these babies. I'm gonna go get some from Dan, just to distribute and make sure that all your people are well taken care of. As well, there was a very quiet roundtable discussion regarding the clarification of setbacks. Trish Javerick brought forward, she kind of presented the clarification for setbacks specifically for the new minus Commercial Street and secondary plan. Again, very quiet roundtable. So what was requested because of the silence is email responses, so we're waiting on those for our next meeting in May. As well, Port Williams and Canning Source Water Protection Committees are both getting active in March. We haven't had a meeting since, I do believe, twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one, sorry. So it's about time, and we're getting back on that for the spring. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other reports to come before the meeting? I would add, oh, Counsel Killam? Okay. Other business, you're getting ahead of me, I just love to do my reports. Annapolis Valley Regional Library Board Meeting this month was canceled because our new CIO is just beginning, and so in order to ease the transition, it was a bit premature to have a board meeting, so it's been rescheduled for later in the spring. The Annapolis Valley Trails Coalition Board did meet, there will be some, some changes happening a little bit in how some of the things in the trails are managed and how the issues on the trail are communicated, that I will have more updates on once the committee has met again. But the need is pretty vast out there on the trails, capital side of things, so looking to resource those things appropriately will be a discussion, and I will update council at that point. And Landscape of Grand Prairie meets this week, so I have nothing from them until after Thursday. Any other reports for the meeting? Okay, seeing none, I look for a motion to receive the reports, both written and verbal. Moved by Counsel Meisner, thank you. Seconded by Counsel Allen, thank you. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Other business, item eleven, Counsel Killam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In the past couple of months, I've been receiving a lot of complaints regarding cellular and internet service up in the, in our area in District Three. Just wondering if there's any plans of improving the service with respect to those kind of dead areas that we have up there, and I've been asked to bring that forward.
That's, it's more, it's definitely a provincial issue, particularly the cell service one. My advice is always to check the Development Nova Scotia website for internet-related inquiries, because most people are on the Internet Initiative, so that's a really good resource for people, the Development Nova Scotia webpage and all the maps they have available. In terms of cellular service, I did, and this is just coming from my perspective, but there is a report coming, I believe, from the provincial government at some point on the current state of cellular service and, and a plan to go forward with an associated budget. So I would stay tuned on that piece of things, but I do know from my attendance at the last Rural Natural Resources and Rural Economic Development Committee meeting that I attended in, I don't even remember, December, that they did say that there was a fulsome report coming on cell service and the gaps, so I don't know if that's helpful.
Wait and see.
Yeah, and call the MLAs, I think is another good piece of advice there, because it's their wheelhouse.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else on that issue or any other item to come before the meeting? Seeing none, comments from the public? Would anyone wish to speak to the meeting? Go ahead, Sarah, come on up. State your name and address for the record, and we're happy to hear from you this morning.
My name's Rick McMahon. I live in Victoria Harbour. I'd just like to thank you for your consideration to item number nine that you brought up. Mr. Killam, thank you for that. But I'd also like to just speak briefly to why we don't want the spraying done, and there's, there's the effect on all the animals and the insects and all that, but there's also, from my point of view, it's a biodiversity issue. The spraying is done to kill hardwoods. Glyphosate will also kill softwoods. It can kill whatever you want it to kill, depending on the concentrations that you use, but our hardwoods are under threat now. We've got an insect that is devouring our beech trees, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that. There's the emerald ashbore coming in, two signature hardwood species of the Acadian forest, and for us to be spraying hardwoods, clearcutting an area, and then what's coming up, is a very diverse forest landscape that has the potential, in a lot of time, to grow into something great. But then if you spray all the hardwoods and then you're going into monoculture, then you're just opening yourself up for more pests that are gonna target that monocultural area that you have. So I really want to thank you and encourage you to please put the provincial government's feet to the fire, if you can, any way you can, and that's, that's the reason for the letter that Doug and Pat wrote. It's a desperate attempt to try to basically save our land, you know, save the, it's an ecological issue. We all feel the effects of climate change with the incredible storms that we're having, and actually, we're spared mostly, you know, but anyway, thank you. I just want to say, thank you, please do what you can, and we will really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to come up? Okay, thank you for joining us this morning, and thank you for, even being here is a contribution, I didn't say anything, so thank you for being here. Okay, at this point, we are going to move into an in-camera session of council. There will be no motions, so we'll be looking to adjourn into in-camera. We'll take a quick break before we do that, and we will not be coming back online because there are no motions. So I would thank everyone who was with us today, in person and online. Thank you, council, for your participation, and I'll see you all in camera. Have a good day. And I need a motion to adjourn into in-camera. And I need a motion to adjourn into in-camera, the very key part of this process. Moved by Councillor Hurdle, seconded by Councillor Meisner, thank you. All in favor, please signify now. Don't forget to vote. We held it together till the very end. Motion carried unanimously somehow, and we are officially adjourned into in-camera. Motion carried unanimously somehow and we are officially adjourned into in camera.
Thank you.